This morning, we have Pastor Jennifer Weaver with Christ United Methodist Church here in Washington. Good morning.
Good morning. Let us enter into an attitude of prayer. Holy and eternal God, Creator of all that was, is, and ever will be, Redeemer who came to show us wisdom and truth, Spirit of empowerment and guidance. We pause this morning to give you thanks for our many blessings. Having just celebrated the anniversary of our independence, we give you thanks for the freedoms that we enjoy. God of all, we invite your presence into this space and time. Pour out your grace on each person that they may speak with kindness. On each commissioner that they would use their authority wisely. And that each decision made here today would be made with the good of the whole in mind. May your love and blessings continue to be poured out onto Davies County. Amen.
Thank you.
Next up, we've got courthouse renovation update. Talked to Derek yesterday. Everything's going really well. A lot of move, the move-ins are all scheduled, I think. Yeah, he just left. The court, one of the courts has moved in. Circuits in, and I think each week there's a new department moving in. Second and third floors, I believe he said is, they're just finishing touches on that. The first floor, forget now, he said what date, that's kind of. Forget what date now, he said that was gonna be, it's scheduled for seven twenty-one. Budget, everything's on budget, nothing's changed. Contingencies remain the same, but everything's on track and everything's looking good. Any questions on that?
Nope.
Hopefully on the final stages of all of that. Meeting minutes of six twenty-four, twenty-five. Any changes on that?
No, sir. I will make a motion to approve.
I'll second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes two zero. Chris here with the highway. How you doing, Chris?
Alright. I don't have a whole lot, but Mike said he was tired of having these record-breaking fast meetings, so he invited me to mix things up.
Thank you.
Now, the first thing I do want to address, the Fourth of July holiday for the highway department. We, we were, we were working four-ten, so we're Monday through Thursday. Typically in the past, when that holiday falls on a, on a Friday to compensate the highway workers to get their day off, we would get a ten-hour floating holiday to use throughout the year. Or not ten hours, but a day, a day. So if they use it on a ten-hour day, they get the day off. That's the intention of the holiday is to get the day off. If they wait and use it when we go back to eights, they just get the day off. Since we had no benefit of it and we put our forty hours in. And I, I looked through some meeting minutes and sent them to you guys in the email. That's what we've, we've done in the past in our protocol.
We gotta have a motion to pass that, Jen. I'll look for a motion to pass their floating day.
I'm so moved.
I'll second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes two zero. Alright, Chris.
Okay. The next thing, just to give a little project updates, I guess. We're currently in the process of putting our fabric and rock down, turning our gravel roads into, you know, we're trying to do fifteen mile a year right now. And last year, we tiled fifteen mile of road. Actually, it was eighteen, but we're kind of overachievers sometimes. But then now we're trying to get at least fifteen mile under fabric and rock that we can chip and seal it this year. And I think we did some math real quick and we're like at six point five miles with the fabric and the rock as of today. So get about another, I don't know, another six, seven miles done and we'll start tile operations this year for next year's chip and seal roads, and we're hoping to get fifteen mile of road tiled. We'll start our tiling probably towards the end of July, the end of this month. August, we'll start doing chip and seal, so the roads that we've put fabric and rock over, we'll chip and seal them along with our mainline chip and seal of our HMA roads. September, we'll start our paving. We're hoping to overlay ten mile of road. I actually didn't get an update from EMB, because they had got our last two CCNG grants. And I think they're probably due to start paving overlays anytime. But I didn't get the actual date. Every time it rains, it pushes it back a day, so. It makes it hard for them to project. The bridge project is on schedule. I did make some notes on it. I think they got the approach slabs poured. They're wanting to pour the deck. Make sure I tell you right. Yeah, they're wanting to pour the deck Wednesday if the weather cooperates. The walls are poured. They're got about two or three weeks of work underneath the bridge. But they lost all last week for flooding because the creek under the bridge was high, so they couldn't do anything. And as of right now, the, the approach slabs, we got one of them at five hundred PSI and it's gotta be like five hundred and fifty PSI for the, to release it to traffic. So one of the approach slabs has not passed the test yet, so we're waiting on it. But that, that is still on schedule, even though they've lost a week. The CDs, I'll give you guys an update on the, on our investments. We got a Keen Bridge investment, MVH investment, and we got an investment of the money we received from the relinquishment. I think I've got them announced. I think one of them was seven hundred and. Actually, I don't have them. One of them was seven hundred thousand, one was like a million, and then the relinquishment was. We, we actually invested two million dollars of that and we took five hundred thousand dollars out to do, pay for some of the PE. And the CDs actually gained us about almost two hundred thousand dollars now. So hopefully by the time that in twenty twenty-nine, when the construction starts, the money that we took out, we'll actually have back. A couple of things we're working on, on the school zones. The, the signs are like a pale yellow for school zones. The new state standard for these signs are a bright fluorescent yellow. So we're, I've talked to my bridge guy that does our signs and we're gonna go through and start changing signs at school zones. Hopefully before the school season starts to, to start drawing attention to them areas. As we're hard-surfacing roads out in the county, there's a lot of Amish schools out in the county. And now that the roads are hard-surfaced, the, the speeds pick up, the traffic picks up on them. So we just want to draw more attention to them schools. And I thought it'd be a good opportunity to change them signs out and update them and add them, so we're doing that. We're working on a thousand north. I think I talked to Mike about it. Got a recommendation about the speed limit. It's thirty. Be able to drop it down to twenty-five through, through Raglesville where that school and them curves are, so we can drop that down. We got a four-way stop or a two-way stop on Old Highway Fifty and Nine Hundred East. We've paved, paved Nine Hundred East going south. And currently the traffic stops at Old Fifty, which probably has about six hundred cars a day. And the traffic goes through on Nine Hundred East, which has like seventy-two cars a day. So typically you want to stop the lower volume of traffic, not the higher. So we got a recommendation to, to switch the stopping pattern on that. So we'll do that. We'll put some public information out on that and put some advance warnings and stuff. I think that's about all I got. I know it was pretty rough, but.
No, that was good. Thanks for the update, Chris, and keep doing what you guys do. You guys are doing a great job out there.
Okay. If we could just talk about REO a little bit. It was in the last meeting minutes, but also we've had some progress, I think. There's just one detail that is still, I guess, kind of up in the air. We've granted them through the end of this month to have them sort that, that out.
I haven't been here at the meeting, so I don't know what, I don't watch them either. I guess I should.
Don't watch them.
Don't watch them. But I guess REO had wanted an extension. If you guys have talked about that, a six-month, six-to-seven-month extension. And I, I think it stems from when we made the contract with them about closing Two Hundred North. They needed thirty months to mine through the road and get the road put back. And for whatever reason, it was seven months before they got to the road, to mine through the road. So that automatically put them seven months behind. So they asked for an extension. I think we've granted them an extension with some compensation for that extension and to fulfill the payments that they promised us or agreed to make as far as a runaround road and, and putting the other road back. But I, I've seen some emails come through, but so.
I'm just curious, one, one of the things that I was wondering about, we got a, super helpful to get an idea on what the overlay might be or the, the cost of finishing that road might be, which is why we're trying to figure out an appropriate number for the bond. What they've asked for is to potentially move from two of the roads that were closed, Three Fifty East and North. They were interested in moving that, which equates to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in bonding capacity. Once those are appropriate, they'd like to move that over to Two Hundred North. That'll help them out. And if, if the roads are okay.
Not moving roads, moving.
The bond. Moving the bond from those two over to that road. And I'm just curious if conceptually you all are okay with that? I mean, we want to get to that higher number, just so we know we've got sufficient, sufficient dollars to repair the road when the time comes, if, if we need to.
Well, they've asked, they've asked for Three Hundred East or Three Fifty East, which is a, it's Three Fifty East in it, Rich. Yeah, they've asked for Three Fifty East to be released at one time, but we didn't release it because they're still using it. I mean, that's their main interest in exit out. Three Fifty North, they asked for it to be released last year, but it was still not completely healed up. I haven't been on it lately. I know Rich works a lot with the, the coal mine guys. I don't know if you've been on it, Three Fifty North?
For the truck traffic it has, it's, yeah, it's, it's.
Yeah, but so Three Fifty East wouldn't be, couldn't be released as long as they're using it. But Three Fifty North, we can drive it and, and that. One of the reasons why we didn't release it or didn't want to release it to them is because it wasn't healed up yet. It's still getting some soft spots. And then they were still reclaiming the ground on the other side of it, so they're still crossing the road. So maybe the road could be released, that bond could be moved down, but I think they would still have to have a bond for the crossing.
They're not crossing that anymore, are they?
I don't know. They've got stop signs up. We'd have to look into that.
I'm supposed to talk with them again this week, but essentially that's the last remaining detail. And even if, you know, I mean, it, it'll ultimately be Earl's call, if you're comfortable with the amount of, of what they can get to on the bond. There's been, but there's been progress over the last couple of weeks.
I feel like if they're using the road any at all, we probably shouldn't release the bond on it. First initial thought.
Yeah, they're, we could drive it and make sure and talk to them. They might have everything reclaimed on the, on the north side of that. If they're still using the road, yeah, because them big trucks just, it just tears it up. They're quitting it. And we do, we do grade it for them. We got a little agreement where we come in and fine-grade it because their graders are too big that they can't really, they can't really slope the road, so we go in and do some work for them.
Helpful. Thank you.
I will bring one more thing up. I've just kind of been thinking about it. I don't know if this place is, but like rain gear for, for our employees, we don't have no rain gear policy. And I seen the NASCO commercial, you know, and, and I'd heard that they help with the rain gear for the city of Washington, RMC and stuff, and not that we do a lot of work in the rain during the course of our day, you know, where guys are standing outside. But every storm that's out there, you know, we're out there cutting trees with chainsaws and dragging trees off the road and brush and everything else. And we don't really have any rain gear provide our guys, so when, when I go out and myself, I got like a black rain jacket. That's just what I got. Probably not real safe. So if we're gonna require guys to have high-vis rain gear, then I don't know if we can look into a policy or.
No, I totally agree. I just, I guess I just kind of assumed that you guys had rain gear in your trucks and stuff like that.
Just our own. You know, we don't ever provide it. We don't compensate anybody for it.
Are you looking for jackets and pants or just jackets or what?
Probably just jackets. I didn't, I didn't know, you know, if there's something we could work out and they're promoting that, we can cut a deal with them. So that's all I've got.
I'll for sure check into that. That's, yeah.
Okay.
Thanks, Chris. Next up, we got Nathan Ryan with West Boggs with the Being for Others grant. Morning, Nathan. Survived a busy weekend?
Ah, it was busy.
Yeah.
Good weather for once. So good morning, guys. Thanks for having me here this morning. Just wanted to quickly talk about the Being for Others grant. Before I get into that, I wanted to talk about West Boggs just a little bit to give you guys some background on the visitation numbers that we have. So for the first time just last year, we got Placer AI, and that was done through the chamber, I believe. Really showcased how busy our park is. So we had two hundred and forty-five thousand visits last year and over sixty thousand individual visitors. That does not include kids or Amish. I believe probably half our campground is Amish on the weekends, so that's a significant number as well. Just to put that in perspective, Davies County has thirty-four thousand ninety-seven people in it. Martin County has nine thousand eight hundred and sixty-four, so total of forty-six, or I'm sorry, forty-three thousand nine hundred and sixty-one people. So we've had significantly more individual visitors than live in both counties combined, full population. So I'd say that really puts us as one of the bigger or biggest tourism draw in the area.
What's the breakdown on the visitors that are staying, camping, or just coming, coming through the door?
There's no way to know. Yeah, because we don't really, you know, you might have four people in a car that camp. You might have one. We don't track, we have no way of tracking that because it's seven dollars a vehicle when you come in. Maybe half, something around that neighborhood, I would think.
How many, how many people, how many campsites are rented out throughout the year?
I don't know that offhand. I'd have to.
If you could get a breakdown of that and then long-term campsites, right, the ones that are long-term? That, that goes with the, the tourism dollars, obviously.
It does not.
Right?
No.
Why not?
Just our, it just isn't part of the law for campgrounds. That's excluded.
I thought it was.
I don't believe so. However, the rental cabins are, so we do rent those a lot. We have four trailers in Martin County and then a few cabins, too, that we rent out.
Yeah, I'd probably know better. I just thought that there was thirty days, I thought was like the max, and then it turned to long-term, so it didn't count towards it, but.
Yeah, it, we don't contribute toward that for the campground itself. I think that's excluded in most areas. But anyway, so I did give you guys some pictures of the, the golf course. Unfortunately, the fairways have died. They planted Bermuda grass, so you guys may or may not know this. We own Stalls Restaurant and the land and then golf course as well. And then those are leased out and then individually ran. So those guys had, you know, done the springing, done the improvements on the golf course. Unfortunately, the weather killed it. Between the snow cold and then the extra rain this spring, for whatever reason, killed the Bermuda grass. So those guys were pretty worried about it. They needed resprig right away. I was concerned because of our topsoil mostly, if, you know, not only the revenue loss, but then if we don't have grass, it's gonna wash away quickly. So they'd asked if the park could help and, you know, I'd reached out to State Board of Accounts. I was a little worried to use our tax ID number for something that was kind of for a private business, but still going on our land. So we did get permission from State Board of Accounts to do that. So what's happening is the golf course paid us for that springing. That check cleared. Then the park's going to run that through the park and get the tax break. So the springing's already taken place. They wanted me to write a grant for them, which is totally fine. But I needed it to be something that I wasn't already gonna write a grant for the park. We've got some dilapidation going on with certain buildings in the park that really needed addressed, and I've got kind of those grants that I know of allocated toward those. So I was like, hey, if you give me something that I don't know of, I'll be happy to apply for it. So they found the Being for Others grant, which is through Memorial Hospital. Believe they're giving away six hundred and fifty thousand dollars this year, so we'll find out about this by August. So I applied for thirty-seven thousand four hundred and sixty-one dollars and seventy-five cents, which was the estimate from Grass Masters plus the fertilization. It ended up being a little bit cheaper, so if we do get awarded this, I'd likely tell them, hey, it actually ended up a little bit cheaper. Once it happened, the total cost was thirty-three thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars. So I don't, I haven't heard back or anything, but regardless, it will get fixed and is paid for.
So yeah, if you don't get the grant, it's paid for through?
Through the golf course. So it is done. Hopefully everything takes, been watering constantly and fixing the water lines, stuff like that. Still a little rough. I mean, it's, it's gonna take a little while to grow. We're keeping the carts off the fairways and stuff, but I'd say within a couple of months, it'll look pretty nice.
Real quick, because we'll, we'll, I, I think, obviously grant, great, I love grants, right? On the two hundred and forty-five thousand, sixty thousand individual, how many of those were outside of Davies County? How many of those are Davies County people?
Yeah, I wish the, the data would tell us that kind of stuff. I don't know where they came from, you know.
And are they unique or is it a visitor that can come in and come out and then like go away and then come back in?
Yeah, it says sixty point two thousand individual visitors and then.
So those two hundred and forty-five, some of those are coming in and out.
Correct.
Yeah, gotcha, gotcha. So sixty thousand unique. Alright, gotcha.
Yeah, and maybe the data will change. I know that we're getting that Placer AI this coming year. Maybe we'll have some more information.
We gotta be careful with saying we've got sixty thousand visitors. If they're Davies County people, they're not visitors to Davies County. They're already Davies County, right? That's what I would say. Correct, visitors of the park, yeah, yeah. So then to call it tourism, whenever it's people who already live here is tough. We don't know the number. If, if, it might be sixty thousand brand-new people from all over the place, right? Not from Davies County. But yeah, that would be awesome if that would have gave that, right? We'd have loved it.
Yeah, I'm still impressed with the numbers. I mean, exceeding the entire population of both counties is pretty solid, I think. You know, considering a lot of people don't go.
Press the numbers, just be careful how it's stated. That's what I would say.
Yeah, well, I think that information would be very useful. Then we know where to advertise. You know, I know I'm from Jasper. I know a lot of people don't come from Jasper. Used to go to Patoka, so, you know, I gotta build wards, set up an entrance to Jasper, things like that, trying to get some new areas to draw here. I know a lot of people come from Indianapolis, Louisville, places like that, so. Like to take those underserved areas or underutilized, you know, that we're not advertising in and try to bring them in. Especially for the concerts and events and things that we're having now. Yeah, I can get you numbers on some camping if you would like.
Yeah, that'd be great. Yeah. I know you guys are packed a lot, you know, but yeah.
Oh, yeah, we sell out about every week.
And you do a good job.
Thank you.
I think, I think it's good. I'd rather have local people staying in Davies County than going to, you know, McCorvick's Creek or something like that.
How's the water?
Much better this year, actually.
That's awesome.
We had thousands of swimmers. Just two years ago, our numbers were in the hundreds of thousands in cell counts, which is horrible. Right now, we're like under eighty thousand, which is pretty good. So we're doing about thirty thousand gallons of enzymes this year. It's a formulation that actually eats the same nutrients that algae does. So it's consuming the phosphorus that the algae would normally consume. And we haven't had a fish kill, which is the first year in a long time. So normally, we're applying similar amount of algicide or similar cost of algicide. We have a larger fish kill and less results. So this is a new formulation. As far as I know, no one's ever done this before. I went to the Indiana Lake Management Conference and no one's doing this, so it's pretty exciting that it's working. You know, we'd love some extra funding or whatever to, to get the whole lake treated. The lake residents are participating, so I sent out some information to them. They're able to buy five-gallon jugs or totes, and then this product doesn't require permits since it's a natural product without a real MSDS sheet like the others, you know, cause harm to the environment. This is just a natural enzyme. So they're able to pour in at their docks and that helps the coves, and then the park's covering the main drag of the lake. But much better this year.
Two, three years ago, it closed in, I mean, July fourth?
Correct.
And then maybe two years ago, it closed in September?
Two years ago, we closed on July fourth. Three years ago, it wasn't here. And then last year, we didn't close, but it got pretty bad.
But this year, do you anticipate that?
I don't anticipate closing at all. Yeah, it's hard to say. I mean, this rain is unpredictable.
Does the rain seem to help?
It hurts badly. So we have eighty-four hundred acres that drain into West Boggs. Most of that is farmland. And even if it's not farmland, a lot of people have animals. So that animal waste and farmland soil and all that fertilizer drains right into boggs. And just like a farm, if you have a lot of nutrients, helps the plants grow, helps that algae grow too. So the rain, especially in the spring, washed away all those fields that didn't have cover crops right into the lake, and it was probably the worst year in a long time to combat that. So I would expect better results if we didn't have so much rain.
We have to approve the grant, yeah.
I'll look for a motion to approve the Being for Others grant for the golf course.
So moved.
I'll second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you guys.
Thanks, Nathan. Next up, we've got Lauren. Morning, Lauren.
We've already started calling facilities for next year for elections. And Bethel Church South, we've used for years and never had any issues or anything, but they've had a form now that they want everyone to sign when they're using their facility. No cost, just saying that we're not gonna put nails in the wall, et cetera. So I just need to have this signed if I could.
Absolutely. We appreciate them, by the way, letting them use that every year.
And there'll be more of these coming. Some places do charge us and some don't, so, but there'll be more coming.
Absolutely.
I want to take a motion for the facility agreement with Lauren.
So moved.
I'll, I'll second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes two zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lauren. Sheriff's Department service contracts. Morning, Sheriff.
Morning. The bra crumples, the one we're talking about?
I think we're all on the same page.
Yep. Okay. Yeah, I'd like to put that ball in your court. They do the preventative maintenance for HVAC system and the ice machines and some other stuff. They, they're there quite a bit. So I'm happy with the work they've done.
Yeah, that's kind of when that first came out here, maybe a month ago, I had a few questions about it, but I didn't realize it's the ice machines, exhaust fans. They come about four times a year, it looked like.
It seems like they're, they're more than that.
Yeah.
We actually have a compressor that they're gonna have to replace here in the next couple of weeks, I think. But that's their system. They installed it.
You have any questions?
It went up three grand over the last one. Of course, I didn't get that till after the budget was turned in.
Ken, do you know, are we, like, if there's a, I think a three-year plan and a one-year plan, do you know what we currently have right now?
Commissioner signed it the last time, or the council approved the additional appropriation for it.
And they installed, I mean, they installed the equipment.
They installed the equipment, right.
And you thought it was a three-year, the three-year plan the last time?
Think so.
Think they see the three-year plan again? Do you think that's?
Yeah, I mean, if it's only, it's gone up three grand, which of course, nobody likes when things go up, right? If we can lock it in.
Nothing ever goes down.
Right, yeah. If we can lock it in, just my salary, that's it, but yeah, no, but if we can lock it in at, at, at that price for that three-year, three years, I think that's smart to lock it in at that.
What I feel like too, I'll look for a motion to approve the maintenance agreement.
So moved.
I'll second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes two zero.
Thanks.
We also had some other contracts, if you just have just a second, but I know we're still talking about that with those companies.
I can go ahead and sign those. It's been past twenty days. We have QCC and Diamond Pharmacy, which Diamond Pharmacy is something new that we're trying. We've, we've always gotten our prescriptions through QCC, and they've changed the way they're doing business. So we kind of looked at Diamond Pharmacy and we, we believe we can save maybe six hundred dollars a month by going to Diamond. It just depends on your inmate population.
What that's doing, they're, they're sending, they're sending medication for inmates. And that's not as big of a. Um, and and that's not as big of a deal. I mean, the QCC contract is is a big deal as far as.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's uh. Yeah, it's uh, you gotta have medical in your jail. I, we're lucky we have someone there every day, UCC doing the work.
And you're happy with both of those as options?
I'm happy with those, yeah. And we'll see what Diamond Pharmacy does. Diamond's been in the correctional business for as long as I can remember. But uh, we may see some savings, we may not. It depends on your patience. We had one that was getting ready to go on dialysis, so gotta pay for that. Have control over those type of issues.
I just wanted to ask about it. Thank you.
Alright, thanks.
Thanks, Sheriff. Thanks, we got the Davis County Hospital appointment recommendations.
Fire, Corson fires next.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. Uh, Corson and Fire Security Agreement. Do you have anything on that?
No, I mean, um, look like.
We're gonna have them for a year, correct, and then we'll switch to what all of the rest of our facilities.
And Scott did a good job on catching that, right? Making sure that it was a year.
Sent us an email on that, kind of caught that up, that we'll just have them for years instead of installing it and then we'll switch over to our. Vendor that takes care of the rest of the buildings.
That's right.
I'll look for a motion uh, to approve the Corson Fire and Security Agreement.
So moved.
I'll second it. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes two zero. Uh, the hospital board uh. Recommended two individuals.
We have a couple going off, right?
Yeah, I got two people going off the board and these, this is for uh. Run through July twen- July of twenty twenty five through June of twenty twenty seven is the term. Two nominations were Darren Steiner and Carrie Alford.
Yeah, Darren would be, his term is up, so it's keeping him on for another term. And then adding, adding her, so.
Carrie.
Right.
Which was taken, she taken.
Um, Shaw Walter, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's right.
Yep.
Um, I know both of them, both of them good people. Carrie's affiliated with the Washington High School. So I think she'd be a good add on there. Oh, and it takes a mo- motion to uh, approve those recommendations.
So moved.
Second it. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes two zero. That's about it. Anybody else got anything? I'll look for motion to pay claims, pay your own claims.
So moved.
I'll second it. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes two zero. Thanks, everybody.
So, I really don't know if they're.